Went through a lot of wood today.
Cynthia, who are we not expecting?
We're expecting Billy and Karen Blakemore. And I didn't hear from Chris Parry, but he doesn't often email. And he usually texts Miranda, or I would see him in person and he would tell me.
I haven't heard from him. I'm not sure if he'll be here.
My sound quality is bad. I'm gonna come, I'm gonna, I'm gonna exit and come back and see if it's any better. Hi Karen.
Hi Karen.
Hello.
Hi.
What's that?
This is, I think it's this receptionist we had. A newer format?
No, it's the same, should be the same.
Are we ever gonna have live meetings?
Finalizing the hybrid meeting system with the goal of having the Board of Trustees do their meeting on the 15th hybrid. And assuming that goes well, we could do March's meeting in person for those of you who want to do so.
Have you seen this system in operation yet or testing?
Yeah, so we tested it last week. There were a couple of things we need to fine tune and we needed to order some equipment for. Otherwise, we would have tried to do this month. So our, the person we hired will be coming back to us on March 15th to get those pieces installed. And then, like I said, we'll try, then Board of Trustees will be the first to try it. And then, again, assuming nothing goes wrong, you could do it in March.
Okay, well, progress.
Yeah, it's good.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Right, exactly. Hope nothing goes wrong. Especially our little school system, we, we installed the, sorry, my camera was on. We installed the, like, camera TVs on the wall. And so you'll be able to engage with anyone who wants to participate. It's gonna be a two-way engagement. So unlike the old system where people could just listen to what you were talking about, this will allow them to give public comment. Every commissioner will have their own mic. It's a gooseneck mic. They can turn it off, they can turn it on. So none of that, like, background noise. So yeah, a whole nice new system, but no new chairs. We realized this, we bought all these nice new things, and we should have probably bought some chairs, because the chairs are still funky. Sorry, got to deal with the old chairs. Small price to pay, though, for a hybrid system, I'd say.
There's supposed to be that way to keep the people awake.
Right, that's, you know, there must be, because they're not the most comfortable chairs in the world. Both commissioners and the members of the public.
Well, now you handled one of our issues we were gonna ask about in other business, so we're already saving time.
Glad to get that out of the way. And Cynthia, I don't know if you're gonna get Chris Parry. Normally, he would have called by now, and he hasn't. And I know he did text me the other day that he was having some, some issues at home. Some housing issues. Assuming Cynthia can hear me.
Okay, so.
I can hear you, yes.
So Billy's not here, is that correct?
I don't think so, unless he's one of the call-in users. But I think Linda, that's, I think that's Linda and Julian.
Well, there's two call-in users, it looks like.
Yeah, Julian has his camera, but I think he's also calling in because the sound quality isn't.
Okay.
And then Lynn, so I think one of the other, the other call-in user.
Okay. Well, we should probably get started if we're ready, and then Chris and/or Billy can join.
Okey-dokey, ready when you are. You ready, Hannah?
We're recording, yep.
We're recording, okay. All right. Go ahead, Cynthia, go call the meeting to order.
Netherlands Planning Commission meeting is called to order on February 23rd, 2022 at 04:00 PM.
Thank you. Could you call the roll, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Heaven.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Herring.
Here.
Commissioner Glasser.
Here.
Commissioner Cornell. And Commissioner Blakemore. Please note for the record that Commissioners Parry and Giblin are not present.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's, let's do the approval of the minutes from January 26th. Does anyone have any comments, corrections, or issues to raise with the minutes? I only had one, one question, Cynthia, and that is, near the end of the minutes, there's a section called adjournment, and then there was a lot of, of items in there that looked like it was other business. I'm just wondering if it's just a minor edit to, to just move those paragraphs into the other business, if you see what I'm saying?
I already fixed that and changed it in the minutes. I noticed it earlier today. And I uploaded it into the packet. I just didn't send out a message to you guys. But I noticed it and, and fixed it in the packet. Thanks for noticing that.
I, well, then you must have got my telepathic comment. But I, and I was looking at an older version all day, so, okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else, anyone?
I didn't see anything. I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
I second.
Second, this is Linda.
A second by Linda.
And we'll just go down the list. Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornell? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes.
Chair Williams?
Yes.
And I have a question for the commission. So I've always asked the trustee if they want to vote, but in the bylaws, it says they can only vote if it's a legislative thing and to break a tie. So I think I don't get to ask the trustee anymore. Sorry, sorry, Julian.
That's okay. We do our best.
I try.
Well, so, so you're suggesting that we don't have to vote on the minutes?
No, this was in the bylaws that the trustee.
Okay.
Only votes to break a tie.
Okay.
It's like a two-parter, that they can, they can only vote on legislative stuff and only in the event to break a tie.
Gotcha, okay.
And they probably won't even be in attendance for quasi-judicial.
That's true. They shouldn't be. Okay, very good, thank you. I don't think we have anyone from the public, but if anyone wishes to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda, we'll open it up for public comment. But having, don't see anyone from the public, I'll go ahead and close that session and we'll move on to discussion items. We don't have any action items tonight. We have two discussion items. The first one is parking in the Central Business District survey, and I believe, Miranda, you're gonna introduce this particular discussion item?
At the Board of Trustee level, we've been, Cynthia and I have been working with trustee Danforth and trustee Corvillan to assess parking in the Central Business District. Specifically, we're looking at parking code and if amendments are needed to that section, not looking to, to solve the problem tonight. But what we're asking of you is to fill out the respective surveys here, whatever applies to you. So if you're a business owner, we would encourage you to do the business survey as well as the citizen survey. If just a citizen, please fill out the second survey here. But tonight, we just kind of really want to have a very informal conversation, identifying some issues that you've seen with parking in the Central Business District. And then, if you have some kind of preliminary recommendations of ways we can improve it, we'd love to explore those as we are evaluating the survey results. So I'm just looking for, for kind of some really preliminary feedback. This will come back before you many times. Once we have the survey results, we will likely, the board will want to kick this over to the commission to do the research and the ordinance amendments. So again, just looking for very preliminary, your initial kind of gut thoughts about parking in the Central Business District.
Okay, so this is a, the survey has been released to the public, so you're not asking for comments on the survey, you're asking us to fill it out, correct?
Yeah, I want you to fill it out, and then just if, if there's anything that comes to mind now that you'd like us to explore more, we'd love to hear that feedback today.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any comments or feedback that they'd like to make at this point? Regarding parking in the Central Business District?
I have some, of course.
Okay, I think that was Karen.
Right.
Could you, could you speak up?
Oh, sure, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so Miranda, I see in the summary that the, the purpose of the survey is to, okay, let's see, to resolve the parking issues currently in the CBD. And so I'm wondering what, what, what are the current issues in the CBD from your point of view or from the Board of Trustees' point of view?
That's a great question. What sparked this conversation is that we've had two variance requests from Catman Do and Bucy Brews, because based on the current count for number of spaces needed for off-street parking, they were in the high 30s for both businesses. And, and there's really no way, aside from paying into the commercial parking fund, that they could have met the off-street parking requirement. Therefore, they came before the Board of Trustees, and both were given pretty substantial variances. Catman Do got knocked down, I believe, from 39 to 6, and Bucy Brews went from mid-30s to 12. And I think the reason for that with the Board of Trustees is just there, there is no realistic way to do parking. There are no spaces, I guess, in the Central Business District to do that off-street parking and still comply with the 300-feet rule, as well as paying into the commercial parking fund is a pretty significant financial hardship. I think if Catman Do had to pay in, they were looking at just shy of $73,000, which was not going to be feasible for them. So that's really what started this conversation. I'd love to kick it over to trustee Taylor, though, if you wanted to add anything. But that is why, it was under that realm of these variances that trustee Corvillan, trustee Danforth really wanted to evaluate whether the parking code for the CBD even makes sense anymore.
Yeah, we were, we were reviewing that in light of the fact that literally there is nothing that a business can do to expand the parking in that area. And so we've been, we've been fudging that a lot by saying, oh, well, you can go ahead and say you're borrowing from the parking spaces from the nearby church, or something like that. But all of that's just fudging. The point remains that if we're going to have businesses in the Central Business District, and if those are businesses that people are going to tend to drive to, then we really are looking at reevaluating the entire parking, or entire set of parking ordinances altogether. And before we did that, we wanted to gather some data. So this is largely gathering data in preparation for considering a rewrite of those ordinances in the first place.
Okay, thank you for that, Miranda and Julian. I have more, more questions and comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, so, so I'm, I'm wondering about equity and fairness with other businesses that aren't in the Central Business District, but they're in the commercial area, like BNF. So there is some value to a parking space, and it seems like businesses, I would say, should pay into a commercial parking fund if they can't provide parking. And then, the town could, in the future, hopefully, theoretically, provide parking for these businesses who have paid into the commercial parking fund. And it seems like we've set a precedence to waive parking requirements for the Central Business District. At least some of the requirements. I think on those last two applications that came to the Board of Trustees, they did require some parking spaces for the businesses, but not the full number. Maybe like one-third or one-tenth of the number of spaces that were required. So there seems to be a precedence. And so for fairness, for future businesses in the Central Business District, we should probably waive some of the parking requirements, as has been done already.
Another, I just wanted to jump in, Commissioner Blakemore, I think you bring up a great point, and as a staff, this is why we want parking code evaluated, because when you give too much variances, it really makes it hard as staff to enforce code, because now there's kind of this precedent that we'll just go to the Board of Trustees, and it'll be reduced. And so I think Cynthia and I would love to see that there is a code in place, whether it's Central Business or other districts, that is actually enforceable by us, and not kind of a number that people baca, and they just let them go to the board and ask for something else.
Another thing I wanted to say is that I think we need to update the 2009 parking study so that we can start looking at a long-range plan for parking that's accurate. Maybe we would consider things like shuttles and pedestrian and bike paths and parking on the outskirts of town. But I think that study would characterize the current and future parking needs.
Study.
So I have a couple more, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. No, I was just gonna echo that. I was gonna say in my comments that I think it's a good idea to see if we can update that study. I mean, if you look at it, there's been quite a bit of change that's occurred since that, you know, study, so it, and, and like you point out, other modes of parking, such as shuttling and so forth, it was not addressed. So, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks for that, Steve. In the survey, there is a question about parking in the right-ofways, recovering the right-ofways. When that is considered, we should also consider the impact to property owners that live, that are adjacent to the right-ofway. And be sure that it's implemented fairly. See if I have anything else. I did want to say I couldn't access Lindsay's map.
Vice Chair Reese actually noted that today. I thought it was public. It turns out it was only released to myself and Cynthia. I believe that's been fixed now. So if you try that link again, thanks to Vice Chair Reese, it is now public.
Oh, okay.
And I tried it, and it does work.
Oh, okay. My very last comment is in the table, where you're looking at the regulations for different municipalities, it would be nice to have the town of Netherlands in that table.
Are you talking that comparison document?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have. I took the survey, and I think it, it's really comprehensive and gives you a lot of room to put in your comments, so.
I said, so everyone else take it. No, thanks, Commissioner Blakemore, that's great to hear.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Karen. Anyone else have any comments at this time? Roger?
The mic is pretty far away from me. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think my comments really are, it's more of a history lesson, so I'll be brief. But this is at least the third or fourth time that I know I've been kind of involved with kind of reevaluate this. The comments about our code would be, you know, we can argue and argue or discuss about whether it should be one car, one and a half cars, or two cars, or 300 feet, three cars per 500 feet. But the fact is, I think, going back to the 1990s, in some ways, the biggest thing I'd say is that there's no point even having a, a code count, because we never follow it. And the idea that parking, having the fund, I think is actually, I've always supported that. Back nearly 2000, Bill Allen was very much involved in that when he was a trustee. Now, we tried and tried to try to say that that's actually a good thing, and, you know, we've never been able to make it work. And the idea that, if you use the example of the business trying to go into business and say, we can't afford $70,000, well, we, we actually priced out back there, you know, a parking lot with paid parking and designated parking, and a hard surface, asphalt surface, is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And when you break it down to a 10-by-20 or 9-by-20 parking space, it costs thousands of dollars for every one of those square, square feet parking spaces. So no matter what we do, the, the future board needs to actually say, this is it. We've been, I mean, I, Steve and I have worked on the shed down there, the bike shop. Every, every time the planning commission has made a recommendation, the Board of Trustees has, has lowered the variance. The Catman Do actually came and spoke to us in planning session about putting the second floor on, and they actually brought in, I wouldn't say who, but, you know, representative, a businessman, and they had shared parking. They actually told the people, we have plenty of parking behind Catman Do, and it wasn't an issue. Then it gets built, and all of a sudden, they can't afford it. So somewhere along the line, I guess that would be my sermon. We need to start biting the bullet and actually enforcing what people said they will do and what they won't do. Yeah, I could use that property as a long history. In some ways, it's not even, looking back, it's not even fair to Marvin Garden, it used to be Marvin's Garden, the bar. You know, they were going to expand, and the whole lot where the plaza is now Catman Do Plaza was their parking lot. And they were told they cannot expand, because that's their parking. And so that actually, that lot to the north was actually supposed to be the parking lot. Then we made variances, we made accommodations, now you have the plaza. And I understand, businesses in town is good, but each and every time, we tend not to follow through with everything, or we give unbelievable variances. And then again, here was the Board of Trustees again, having to do it. I don't blame them, I understand, but in some ways, it's actually the planning, and people always say, well, I'll move ahead, and I'm sure I'll be able to get the town to, you know, give in a little bit. And we have done that for darn near 30 years. And I've, I've seen it happen over and over again. So I guess that would be my comment.
So are you suggesting that we go and change the code at this point, since we don't tend to follow it?
We had to look at it, and all I'm, I guess what I'm saying is we should not get into, you know, huge difference of what I'm saying, arguing over whether it should be one, one parking space per how many square feet. To me, it's somehow to find a resolution and actually, whatever we do, to have it start to be enforced.
And that's across the board, not just the CBD.
Yes, across the board, really, absolutely. We've actually had several of the last projects are even reviewed. You know, the pizza, the pizza place opened up and totally changed. And I know they were given some idea about parking at the bank, but a lot of the things we hadn't even reviewed, and here they've gone up. So it's, it's a, I think we finally have got to the point where we actually have to do something. So whatever we do, we, we need to really, really be serious about it and commit to the future to make it happen, whatever we commit to. That's said for me, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Roger. I have a quick question for town staff, and so could you give us an update as to where the, where the paid parking situation is with Ron Mitchell? Is that completely off the table? And if it's not, is that something we should consider as part of this, you know, parking issue?
Wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's off the table. Ron has not signed his SRU agreement yet. Does not anticipate signing it anytime soon. And unfortunately, we did not put into the agreement that he had to sign it within a certain timeframe. Right now, he, of course, could not start his paid parking without signing it. But at this time, he did share that he has no intention of signing it currently.
Okay. I wasn't sure that the commission was fully aware of that situation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Attorney Mattson and I realized that moving forward, we will put in that stipulation, that it must be signed within X amount of time of being approved by the Board of Trustees. But sadly, this, sadly or not sadly, I don't know, this SRU does not have that, which means Ron could choose to sign it in a year from now. I do, it is my understanding that he has concerns with some of the language in the SRU. And so if that were to be the case, and he wanted the SRU changed, he would need to bring it back before the Board of Trustees for review.
Okay, and that's, that's why he's not signing it?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought, I thought there was some time stipulation about revisiting, but I guess that wasn't on the SRU. That was just once it's rolling, he's supposed to bring it back to the.
Right, yeah, once he executes it, there is that stipulation that he has to bring it back for review, but there was nothing in there regarding when he had to sign it.
Okay. And by the way, I'm sorry I'm late. I was cooking dinner for the kids tonight. I was striking a time, sorry.
We're glad you're here.
While around the subject of Ron Mitchell's parking, I have something to add. His signs look like they're public town parking signs, which, you know, causes some misperceptions, I think, on the public's part, on visitors. And I wonder if there's any liability issues there as well. At one of the previous BOT meetings, I At one of the previous B O T meetings, I think it was when we were reviewing, when the B O T was reviewing his paid parking plan, he agreed to change those signs so they would not look like public parking signs. And I remember Eric Kuhn Esmel commenting on that. And Ron agreed to do those changes, but I haven't seen any changes.
I'm sorry, you two enforced. And so I would have to look into whether what he currently has separate from the S R U that does have a liability component. I'd have to do a little research until I can enforce what he committed to in that agreement.
He just, it was just a verbal amendment during the meeting.
Okay.
And, you know, it more, I don't know if there's liability for the town. If someone thinks it's, it's a town public parking. But I'm more concerned about people's perception of the town when they drive into those parking areas. This is not town parking. You know, the parking in front of Town Hall is town public parking. But Ron's parking on those dirt lots is not public parking.
Yeah, my initial assumption is that we don't have control over what he uses as signs, but I'll look into it. Sorry, Lucy Taylor.
No, I was just gonna say, so my impression was that this discussion with Ron, while that was a quasi judicial procedure and it was fantastically frustrating, my impression was that it was a strict requirement that if he signs that S R U, if he does his public parking, he must provide parking signs that make it plain that his company is responsible for that. I guess we all assumed he was going to sign the S R U. If he doesn't, then we're kind of back to, we would have to prove that he's providing a liability to the town somehow.
Yeah, there were four, there were four pieces that the board voted on. And I recall the same thing that it wasn't the agreement. I can go look again, towns being he hasn't signed it. I will take a look, Commissioner Blakemore, into that. You know, again, my initial reaction is I'm not sure how much authority we have over what signs he chooses to purchase for his lots. But I'll take a look and see what we, what we can find.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the Ron Mitchell's parking before we move on? Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on parking? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Yes. First off, I wanted to compliment Cynthia on how detailed the packets are. Both of them were well put together and clearly had lots of information in there. And I thought that the information put together by Trustee Corvillan and Trustee Danforth was excellent. I went through and used the information that she had in conjunction with the 2009 parking study. Interestingly enough, just as you said, Steve, there's buildings actually built in some of the spaces that they had identified for, for parking. But their overall number was that there was 2,064 spaces between public and private and unutilized on-street parking throughout the town of Netherlands, which I was surprised by that large number. Clearly, that will have to be adjusted once we get a new parking study. Because as I said, several of those, you know, like one of the lots identified as a potential, they went through and identified lots of properties to potentially be acquired by the town for parking lots. And, you know, one of them was like the Salto Spot, you know, one of them is where the Business Connection is. You know, one of them, there's some houses on, you know, some of them is Ron Mitchell's spots. But Lindsay's information, when I went through there, she had identified 273 private parking spots in the Central Business District, 140 public, and I'm going to add in another 20 for Chappita Park, if you, you know, throw that in there. And then she had unidentified amounts in yellow that I would call kind of opportunity parking. If you can find some spots, you know, along the side of the road and in front of people's houses, you could park there. That came up with 455 spots for me for, and of course, the 2,064 number in the 2009 parking study was townwide. And this was just supposed to be Central Business District. But about 453 spots is what Lindsay identified as potential spots. Of course, there's lots of barriers to all of these. You know, there, there's a lot of opportunities, but a lot of them are okay. Some of the things that were, were listed in there as possibilities would require, you know, us to get buildings that have been built into the town right of way moved back, you know. And one of the, the areas that they had listed, they showed two-sided diagonal parking on First Street. And for that to happen, they needed an additional 27 feet of roadway space that is not there. You know, it would require, you know, buildings on that south side of First Street to be demolished so that we could acquire that amount of parking. So there's a lot of barriers to getting these, but there's some that seem a little easier than others. Some of them would be maybe, and this will be a good question for the staff. If we have funds that come down the pipe through infrastructure dollars as yet identified to acquire some of these parcels of land, this spot that they have shown on Proposed Lot Six, you know, has 38 spaces and that's right there. Coming into the traffic circle would be great spots. The Business Connection and Gas Station, you know, again, these are private properties that would have to be acquired. But that would require, give the town a lot more parking there. And of course, you know, pie in the sky ideas like, you know, huge infrastructure dollars coming down the pike and us being able to fund a $5 million parking garage next to the post office or something along those lines. But it seems like there's lots of opportunities, but there's barriers to each of those. Is there anything that you've heard, Cynthia or anybody else, about some large amount of infrastructure dollars that we could tap into down the line to acquire some of these properties to help alleviate the spaces?
I haven't yet. That's right. I haven't yet, although we're kind of keeping a pulse on that with J V A, just to see what comes. And I think a part of this discussion with the Board of Trustees is, do they want to already kind of narrow in that if and when receiving those funds, this is how they want to apply them. But we, we have not received any definitive information about how much town would receive and how we would go back about like acquiring our pot of funds of that infrastructure bill.
Okay. Well, it seems like a great opportunity to maybe leverage some of that downtown development fund in partnership with, with the town and come up with a, you know, I'm not sure, again, there's lots of spaces and it would require a lot of work. But I can tell you, when my wife was the tenant manager, we never imagined the amount of infrastructure dollars we're getting now would be available. So planning for the future and possibly funds becoming available in the next, you know, few years. The pendulum swinging to the fact that, you know, hey, this is going to be crucial to our ongoing development of our Central Business District is this parking issue. You know, and one of the one areas that I saw that might be, you know, there was a couple of areas. I, I thought the, the summary that they put together, the Trustee Danforth and Trustee Corvillan was good there about the opportunities for town right-of-way parking and some private property areas. That area, that lot right next to the Harvest House is another good spot, again, private property. But one area that the town does own would be down Lakewood Drive all the way to the Dead End. And I, you know, it's pretty steep. It drops off along into the town property close, you know, you're going towards the reservoir there. But we could certainly develop that area, extend it out and do plant parking. And that would probably be an additional 40 spots right there that would be, you know, a, a robust walk to the Central Business District. Other than that, I, I think that there's certainly lots of, lots of discussion to be had about this. But, you know, I, I vote for the $5 million parking structure that solves our problems, should that option become available. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jim. Well, speaking of funds, is, are there funds available to update the, the, the parking report that was in 2009? Or is that like even in the, in the plans at this point?
Really in the, in the plans, I guess that the Board of Trustees, again, out of this conversation decides that's a priority. And we're also heading into comprehensive plan. And at this point in time, the best funding opportunity I can find is through DOLA, but it's a 50 50 match and most comprehensive plans cost $200,000 or more. And so that means Netherlands would have to come up with $100,000. I would argue that would be the priority here. While these supplemental plans are great, I do think maybe you'll get kind of, you can pull parking in to that comprehensive study.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any?
I had one question. Yeah, I just have a question. To mention that there, you know, and then alternative to actually providing parking spaces is paying into the town parking fund. How much has the town actually collected over the years from this fund? And how much would we have collected if we hadn't waived fees?
Um, yeah. So to date, we have collected 5,000. Had we not waived fees, we would probably be looking at somewhere around 140,000 at this point from Bucy Brews and Cat Mandu.
So if we've only collected 5,000, does that imply that everyone else has met their parking requirements other than some of these larger businesses?
Yeah, you know, the 300-foot rule is big. That's obviously what you see with CrossFit. CrossFit does not have off-street parking right in front of their business. And so they chose to connect with the bank to get those spaces. So yeah, people try to find any creative way they can. And I think Tracy Taylor alluded to though, like that's really just putting on paper. These are where my spots are. CrossFit is obviously likely not actively encouraging people to go park there. So that is one of the challenges. But more often than not, people are going to opt to find, businesses will opt to find other ways to meet parking. Now, you also have a situation too, like when Cat Mandu was first, when they first moved in, you know, we, we don't require compliance to current code until a major change is made. Both Cat Mandu and Bucy's at a demolition and a commercial remodel, that would prompt them to adhere to code in its entirety, both building and parking. So Cat Mandu historically has never had to provide parking. And then kind of under this code, we're pushed to figure out where those turn-in-and-out spaces would be. We've got a little bit of that historical going on that Commissioner Cornell kind of spoke to where it may not have always been evenly or accurately implemented, even when it was there. And so it puts Cindy and I in a bit of a weird space because we're going to enforce the code that's before us, which is to say you need this officer.
Thanks. That's helpful context. And is that, is that associated by how many spots you're asking for a waiver for? Is that how much you have to potentially pay into this?
Yeah. So Cat Mandu wanted to just provide enough parking spaces for their apartments and, and kind of be exempt from having to provide the spaces needed for their retail. And that's really how that all flushed out is at the end, they were approved for that six and that included an A V A space on site, plus some that they had in the back side of their building. They also were received written confirmation from Century Link. They could use those spaces. And then there was kind of a verbal agreement that they could use the Presbyterian Church's lot as needed, but that didn't end up needing to be added into the actual parking count since it was reduced to six.
I see. And that 70,000, whatever that total number was that they got a waiver for, was assessed by how many parking spots that they didn't? That was the amount that they would have had to pay had they not received a waiver? And that was assessed for parking lots.
Times 2,500 per space.
2,500 per space. And that's what they could not find on site. So they did have, you know, again, they had the six that they needed, but when we, so what we would have been charging them, which is 72,500, was how many spaces that they needed outside of what they could find on their parcel.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Linda, do you have any comments?
No, I'm getting a lot of information from the comments that are coming forth. Some of those were issues that I had. So thank you.
Okay.
Steve, I had one more.
Uh, go ahead.
I was being a little snide before about the $5 million parking structure. But more realistically, is there any money to provide like a small lot that we might give us 50 or 60 spots? One, one of these properties, is, is there any money available that, that we might roll into infrastructure, you know, or something like that?
Really? I mean, any of the funds we have are kind of earmarked more for open space, Parks Trails and Open Space. So I think at, at this point in time, we've been trying to leverage our infrastructure funds. Some of the challenges Netherlands has with the ARPA funds is that we didn't lose revenue. And therefore, that does stipulate how the funds can be used. And infrastructure then comes out of that under that kind of guideline of not, no loss of revenue. So I think we'll have to just keep an eye on what funding streams are available because we just don't have those kinds of reserves to do this. However, I will say, some people are interested in contacting RTD about them building a parking garage. I know that's been done in the past. We're going to try it again, see what comes of it. I know in the past they've said no, and they said no, just based on they didn't feel that their lot was reaching capacity on a consistent enough basis to need it. Now, this is, that information's coming to me third hand. I haven't heard that myself. And so I am going to talk with them and just see what type of partnership that might look like to work with them to fund a parking structure over there.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I saw something about us having to update the master infrastructure plan in 2022 or 2023 or 2024. I, I'm guessing this is going to be a big part of what, what we look at, along with affordable housing and all those great and, and green building and solar and all those barriers to solar.
As part of the comprehensive plan?
Right. That they're, they're, they're looking at doing the new, did I see, was it the comprehensive plan that's being updated or the master infrastructure plan?
Comprehensive plan. The master infrastructure plan, we already did utilities. That was finished last year. We are embarking on streets this year. That's kind of just funded under C I P for town. So we'll do the comprehensive plan. I am bringing forward a grant to the Board of Trustees, however, about a housing study. Um, I guess there's 25% match for that in a housing study, along with the required code rewrite. You're looking at $100,000. So I think the board, again, is going to really need to think about, is it worth focusing their funds on the comprehensive plan and not worrying about some of these like one-off, you know, parking, traffic, housing? Where do they want to invest their time and their financial resources? And so that's going to come before the board next week and, and we'll get directive as staff on where to put our time and energy following that conversation.
Okay. Well, we could keep hoping that there are going to be additional funds, federal dollars that'll come down to help with these many, many things on the to-do list. We just need to try and be in position to access it when it happens.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I don't have much information yet and I hope to soon, but a lot of our neighboring communities, I'm sure, they also don't really know how we'll get them and in what capacity.
This is Linda, and I, I do have a question on the old shop site with the land that's, that's there. Is that being utilized or will it be utilized? Or is it still in the stages because of the, the oil and everything that was put into the soil?
Yeah, we actually just had the wells drilled for a phase two environmental testing. So we should have the results of that in the next couple of months. And that will help us determine what type of remediation needs to be done. Are we doing this kind of a 12-inch surface removal? Or are we having to dig deeper? Now, there is a resolution on that property from a previous Board of Trustees saying that they wanted that designated for housing. Like going back to the comprehensive plan, it would be good to kind of have that outlined in that plan of how does town want to use any of its open parcels? Whether it's the Old Town Shop, the Wing Gate Property, some of our pocket parks, it would be good to use that time in the comprehensive plan to, to assess what's feasible. We are going to allow Frozen Degay Days to use the Old Town Shop as a parking lot, parking area for their event. We have confirmed with the We have confirmed with the industrial hygienist and environmental team that that is not a concern. It won't stir up the contaminants. So in the interim, it absolutely can be used as parking. But that's not, I don't think that's, that parcel is best for long-term parking just because it's so, it is pretty perfect for housing or whatever else might come from that.
But the environmental studies are still going on.
Yeah, yeah, so but we do expect to have the site cleaned up by the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any further comments or feedback, I would ask everyone to. Hello?
Oh, I have, when Miranda or Jim Reese was talking about the town purchasing private property for parking, it brought to mind that perhaps we should be looking at public-private partnerships or private parking. Now, Ron Mitchell's lot at First Street and Snyder, that's currently zoned residential. If it was zoned commercial, he could have more parking spaces in that lot. So. So I think looking at zoning, looking at private parking structures and maybe private public partnerships for parking.
Hey Karen, that space, one hundred East First Street, this is Cynthia. The reason why it only has nineteen spaces is because Ron did not want to do an SRU back when he bought and started to develop it. And there is a, I can't remember the code section on hand, but it is in the parking code that twenty or more spaces requires an SRU. And so he thought about coming forward and then decided he didn't want to. And it had nineteen. So that's, even though it's a high-density residential lot, that's why he didn't have more spaces there. He didn't want to come forward with the SRU.
Oh, I see. So it's not, it's not because of the zone, but because he hasn't applied for a special use on their property.
Correct. Yeah, he didn't want to. So.
Okay.
Okay. If there aren't any further comments or feedback, I would ask everyone to fill out the survey. And you can also include any additional information in there as well as send it to the town staff. Does that sound like a reasonable approach, Miranda?
Thanks. I'm so far asking for feedback up until the beginning of March. And then, like I said, this will come back before the planning commission for further insight input. And then ultimately, when we're ready to make code amendments, that will be, that's a part of chapter sixteen, so it's coming your way no matter what.
Okay, right, exactly. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Some good comments. Let's move on then to the second discussion item, which is for the the MPs for solar promotion. And I believe Cynthia, you're going to introduce this item. Is that correct?
That is correct. So I put in visual form basically what I said last month. So visualize it also because we're going to be bringing this to other boards and it helps them. I know you guys have memorized chapter sixteen like I have and you understand the terminology, but a lot of people don't. So it does help to take a look at it and see things. So. We can move through this slideshow. I think Miranda is my slide master. So as you can see, the benefits of solar energy are far-reaching. This is looking at, if you're looking at solar versus fossil fuels and the reduction that we would see through toxins and other things. So there are good quantifiable results utilizing solar and diminishing fossil fuels. Next slide. I was making a joke here that solar energy are myriad and sundry. There are a lot of other benefits, as you can see, from solar. So looking at incentives, there's a, what is the federal incentive rate right now? I think it's twenty-six percent. I think that's going to drop to twenty-two percent in twenty twenty-three. But that's a pretty, pretty good chunk to get written off for a federal incentive. So there are a lot of opportunities here and solar is a pretty easy opportunity in a place where we get a lot of sunshine despite the snow that we are getting currently. Next slide. Yeah, we saw a little sliver of sun, right?
We did see some sun, yes.
So as I noted in the packet last month, the American Planning Association Solar Papers, they note that the lack of inclusion of language for solar energy in zoning codes and comprehensive plans is a major barrier. On the next slide, they break down how zoning codes have a very direct influence. They are included in codes. They see a correlation with higher levels of installed solar capacity when references in the code. So that is a falling in line that when it's supported in language of zoning codes and comprehensive plans, you see more solar energy in those municipalities across the country. Next slide. So as noted, we have now achieved our bronze designation as a soul smart community. Yay! We've been working on this for a number of years. It's a pretty cool thing. And we are going to continue and keep striving, so we're going to try to go for the gold. But we think we can reach silver fairly easily. We have to do some staff training and work with Safe Built on inspections and a couple of other things. And then gold designation status is really, there's a number of things in terms of turnaround. And one of the main things is making zoning changes. So we're kind of working in that direction through these discussions of considering the different barriers. And once we can codify that, that gets us closer to gold. As you can see, we're looking at a comprehensive plan update. I put that at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four because, as Miranda mentioned, looking at a cost of two hundred thousand for a comprehensive plan update, even with a fifty fifty match, that's still a good chunk of money to put towards the comprehensive plan. And I know that Roger and Steve were part of the steering committee for the comprehensive plan, the last update, which was done. I think you guys did that, what, in two thousand and twelve? And then it was just getting approved in twenty thirteen, I believe, my first team.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it's been a while and in some towns, they update comprehensive plans on the five-year basis. But I think we move a little bit slower in Netherlands. And it'll give us some time and obviously COVID kind of sidelined and sidelined some planning funding. We were looking at some planning funding a couple of years ago and that's all got directed toward COVID. So that slowed us down. But we can discuss the obstacles in the zoning code. That's something we can do a lot sooner. So that is what we are looking at. And then next slide, really, we're just trying to dig into the details of what's actually either in the zoning code or not in the zoning code. We don't have definitions for solar energy in the zoning code. So they include these definitions. I'm not going to read them to you. But you can see, and as we look at those, I think what's important is to consider, are these accurate for Netherlands? Do these seem realistic? On the next slide, they get into different sizes. And that seems very large to me for the large size occupies more than forty thousand square feet of surface area. Principal use on a lot, that's like a community solar garden. And then medium-scale ground mount that occupies forty thousand square foot surface or less, principal use on a lot. That's a considerable amount of space for Netherlands. And then small-scale seventeen hundred and fifty square feet of surface area or less. So I think maybe getting into particulars on size that seem accurate for Netherlands. But I'd love to hear what you guys think about that. And then all of these definitions were taken from the solar best management practices. So I took it directly from that language and figured we could tweak it for Netherlands. With your comments. Any, does anyone have any comments on the definitions? Or do we want to wait till we move through all the other slides?
Why don't we wait and then we can always come back?
Okay, good. Then I can type. I can't do it when I'm talking.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, so really, you know, are the definitions feeling accurate for Netherlands? How can we dial those in more? Any additions that we need? Is there anything that's missing? Thing we want to take out? Those are the considerations we're looking for. I do want to say that as we move through the next slides, we're going to start getting into specifics of section sixteen dash thirty-three, the yard and bulk requirements. So in the next slide, as we start moving through these kind of considerations, I want to be sure that we're not going to create more barriers for solar. So although I think it's really important that we consider these things. Solar on a lot in the mountain residential district, you may not even notice your neighbor's solar may not be impactful in any way. In smaller zones like the CBD or the high-density residential of Old Town, somebody's solar panels, you know, that could block out your shade. So, you know, your garden and other things. So I mean, I think where those districts get more compressed, it's important to give consideration to these things in the planning phase without getting overly arduous. So I hope that as I'm trying to throw these things out, I'm not trying to create more obstacles, but just really trying to dial in to concerns that may come up. So we can address them before they do and really give due consideration. So we can move forward here. We show some roof-mounted and ground-mounted varieties. We've seen these in Netherlands. And then we start getting into the maximum building height. So you note that for a principal main structure, it's thirty-five feet for all zoning districts. So for residential and commercial buildings, the max height is thirty-five feet. Then it starts breaking down into district when you get into accessory, so anything detached. Larger on larger lots, smaller, less height on the shorter, on the smaller lots. And that kind of runs the case, that's the case with lot coverage in the next slide. I think it's the next slide. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Could you back up one? So I was just asking the question if there should be exemptions or allowances for exceeding the maximum building height. I think that's a good consideration because that may come up as one of the bigger concerns that people would have. I think there's a lot of support for solar. But what should we consider regarding exceeding the maximum building height? That is something that potentially could be done by variance going before the board of zoning adjustment. But I think if we start to become a variance factory, which the town, I'm to understand, was before they dialed into the specific five criteria for the board of zoning adjustment. And then it wasn't like you're giving variances to everybody. When you start to give out a lot of variances, you've got a problem with policy. So I want to look these things through before we get there. We may have houses that are already very close to the building height or exceed them. Would that be an issue if they exceeded it with solar? Should there be a maximum amount that they could exceed five feet, three feet? What might that look at, look like? Structure location by lot size, residential, commercial. Obviously, we have a lot of inbuilt structures and old structures. It comes up as a challenge in parking. It comes up as a challenge in, you know, considering building heights and things like that. So just things to chew on for the planning commission to consider. Where should exemptions exist? Should they exist? Should it just go to the board of zoning adjustment to consider?
Do you want some opinions right now, Cynthia?
I am willing, although while I'm presenting, it's hard for me to take down everything you're saying. So if you want to, if you want to hold off, you can.
Okay.
Get all of the input.
Yeah, just make, make some notes so that we can come back if that works, Karen.
That would be helpful. In the next slide, I just show lot coverage. So we're just kind of showing what lot coverage means. Lot coverage is any impervious surface, structures, concrete, asphalt. So, you know, if somebody has a flagstone patio, that's not impervious. But, or a second-story deck is not impervious. The water will run through. But in terms of considering a lot, the lot coverage piece is probably not as predominant of a question with respect to solar unless you're considering ground mount solar. Or you look at some districts that are really built out, like Old Town and other places where they may have a lot of sheds and very small amount of remaining lot coverage. This also gets into considerations of perhaps they need a survey. And as there's been some bad, bad surveying in the past, you know, that could be a challenge in some, in some cases, they may, you know, it may not be an option for them. But I think the lot coverage piece is probably not as predominant as height. In the next slides, we talk about setbacks. Oh, no, we talk about lot coverage by district. So I was just breaking that down of the lot coverage by percentage, larger lots, smaller percentage of ability to cover. Central Business District is an interesting one. You can cover the entire lot. Although you'll notice when we talk about setbacks, they also have to provide some setbacks. So it doesn't mathematically work out in the CBD. It's got some parking and other challenges. But, and then next slide. So lot coverage, our solar system is exempt from lot coverages. Any caveats by size or type of system? Things to think about there. Setbacks. So we're looking at, in some cases, Old Town's another example, it's the older, oldest part of town. So in many cases, there are lots that are really built out. They don't have a lot of space. They may encroach into the setback. So when we look at the amounts of the setbacks in each district in the next slides, you can see that the front street setbacks are the same. So whether it's front yard or street setback for principal and accessory, those are all the same. And the intention there is to have a front yard and not have a lot of clutter, structures cluttering up the front yard. But as you get into the side and rear in the next slides, it changes. So just like the building heights are different for principal structures and accessory structures, they're different. The side setbacks are different. You can see how small those side setbacks are for medium density, high density, neighborhood, commercial, general, commercial, industrial. So that's, I think it's more of a wildfire risk when you consider those really tiny setbacks with accessory structures that can create letter fuel. But those are considerations. Some people want to build right, right near the setback. So in thinking about ground mount solar or as we move forward, when we get into section sixteen dash seventy-four, the projections, they may have something on their house. Something on their house, but, um, as you can see, the rear setbacks are much, much, much less for accessory than they are for principal. And in some cases, very small. High density, neighborhood, commercial, general, commercial, industrial, very small accessory setbacks. So they could put that five feet from the property line, five feet from, you know, that. I want to consider vision clearance issues of where potentially ground mount would sol- solar would go. So it wouldn't impede. Vision clearance with traffic. Um, next slide. So an encroachment in a setback can go before the board of zoning adjustment to request a variance. Should there be any specific caveats taken into consideration, the distance to the property line? Vision clearance being impeded, as I said, utility access. So. When we would review building permits, we'd be looking at this with the different departments to ensure. Access wouldn't be impaired and things like that. But I just think those are good, good things to keep in mind. Next slide. And projections from building. This is really, all these are architectural features. Should we consider solar? As something that could project. Into a required yard or open space? Should it not be? Because it's not really an architectural feature per se. So I ask those questions in the next slide. Do we want to add solar to that list? Any caveats for vision clearance? I think that's always a good thing to think about with respect to traffic and corners. So it's something I'm always thinking about when I'm looking at building permits. Um, next slide. Section sixteen dash seventy-eight performance standards. It mentions glare among other emission types. And because solar panels are not known to cause more glare than windows, should glare be called out as not applicable to solar? Next slide. And then any zoning considerations not previously mentioned. So I had gone over the zoning code and tried to pull out any. Specific barriers that I saw. Did I miss anything? And. Who's got questions? Oh, there are a little bit of extra resource information. In case you're interested. Soul Smart has a great website and there's a lot of. Wonderful information on there. If you're looking for more information and. I am happy to take any questions. Considerations.
Thank, thank you, Cynthia. It was very, very thorough. Thank you for going through the code so closely. I looked at some of those. Um, but I missed some of the others. So those are very, very good. So a question comes to mind, um, right away is, uh, other municipalities and particularly the ones that. Maybe be gold standard, um. How do they deal with a lot of these questions that you brought up?
That is a great question. Um, I think, I think a lot of municipalities are looking at this, whether or not they're trying to achieve soul smart. You know, or some solar designated community status. But this is really what Soul Smart is doing and trying to help towns do. Considering their specific codes and what sort of barriers. Netherland doesn't have. An immense amount of overt barriers. What we see more is a lack of inclusion. So not considering solar, but not really specific standards. We don't have a lot of aesthetic standards in the town that say you can't see solar from roads. You need to screen it, those kind of things. I mentioned that last month. But I think that as you look at other municipalities, they may have more of those. Obviously glare is a consideration if you're near an airport. Um, and that, you know, and that was mentioned, um. In the Soul Smart literature that there would be specific considerations there. Though sometimes it sounds like an airport enough Netherland. Uh, I don't think that's really our big consideration. I think really. With Ned, it's more a lack of inclusion than specific barriers. That were set into the code.
Right. Okay. Thank you. The other question I had is, um, when do you plan to present this to the other boards? Or are you waiting to get more feedback from us first?
We will be presenting to Sustainability Advisory Board tomorrow night.
Okay.
I believe that ProSab and DDA don't meet until March, like mid-March. So we would bring it to them. And I'll be adding a little bit to those. I think the Sustainability Advisory Board is supportive of trying to remove barriers to solar. Uh, this is really the work that they do and what they're interested in. Um, in line with the BOT resolution that supported a hundred percent renewable. By twenty twenty-five and looking at their specific goals and the direction they want to move. For the other boards, I think Youth Advisory Board, ProSab, DDA. Those considerations are a little bit different than the planning commission. They don't speak the zoning language. And I think we need to throw a few carrots in of. What is pertinent to them? For the DDA, that's probably more commercial solar and how they can support commercial. For ProSab, maybe that consideration as we come up on wanting to update the comprehensive plan. Uh, looking at solar gardens on open space, is that something that could be viable? Uh, to generate solar electricity in a larger framework to provide solar for the community? Um, for the Youth Advisory Board, inclusion equity, how can we consider that? Uh, there's equity for everyone to be able to obtain solar in some capacity. So I'll be altering the slides just a bit. So they will get the zoning slides. And it'll help them understand because they don't speak zoning. Um, but also. Getting a little bit more information, getting the juices flowing about what, what may be relevant to them as well.
Right. It seems to me that, that some of the feedback. Or suggestions that they might have would impact zoning or could impact zoning. Uh, so it would be very valuable to have that feedback as we consider zoning changes. Okay, let, let me open it up to the rest of the planning commission if they have any questions or comments. Oh, Karen?
Uh, yeah, I have some comments on the maximum building height. The, um, lot coverage setbacks and. Um, architectural features infringing on open space. Um, I think that we should allow the solar panels to exceed the maximum building height. Now on a slanted roof, they would be flush mounted. So it wouldn't be that much higher. Um, but for a flat roof, I think we should use the community center. Solar panels for guidance. Um, those are on a flat roof and. I don't know how far they exceed over the top of the roof, but that could be, um, what we use for. The extension over the maximum building height for a flat roof. Um, uh, as for the lot coverage and setbacks and architectural extensions of a building. Uh, I think that we should allow the solar panels to, um, exceed the lot coverage. Um, go over into the setbacks, go into the open space. As long as, uh, those extensions do not, um, impact, uh, safety. So I'd be more interested in, um. Uh, ensuring safety than aesthetics. And then as far as requiring a BCA variance or a special review use. I prefer to see no variances or special review uses required, just to make it really easy. For people to add, um, solar to their properties. And that's it.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Billy, um. Or, yeah, I, I would say, uh, I don't agree. Karen or Christopher Blighmore on the heights. I think you just have a blanket. You can go over the maximum height. I don't agree with that. I think. Um, there may, I mean, I think, you know. Using the community center as, as, as a point of reference makes sense. However, we do, um. Deal with height, but I also think in certain, especially in certain districts like, like, um. Identity residential, maybe CBD, um, and other places going higher, um. In these places where there isn't much clearance and it is going to inhibit on people. Um, you know, it, it, it ability to access solar themselves potentially or gardens or, or. Just, just, um, where, where there's already tight quarters going any higher, I think is a problem. Um. But I don't, I don't agree with that one. I do think a lot of coverage is though a place where we could increase. I don't, I don't. I don't think, um, the setbacks are a place where we necessarily need to touch it. Um. But I think, you know, I mean, a solar panel is more or less per- impervious because it's just a big. Paper, you know, I mean, I mean, not paper, but it's just a big thing. It's going to be a ground mount system. It's just a big. Panel that, that is blocking, but there's spaces in between and the water's not, you know, it's not going to hold water. Everything's going to percolate. So it really is arguably an impervious or a pervious surface, um, which is some things on it that water can pass through. Um, so I think a lot, increasing lot coverage, I agree with, and definitely safety paramount, but I don't necessarily know. Um, again, especially in the high density areas, whether setbacks are, are, you want to correct that. And I think we can do all that and still encourage a lot of solar. I, I think, I think just immediately. Let things get higher and let things go on the setbacks. It's, it's really not making use of all the. Other potential places for solar to go without doing those things.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I think that, um. It's going to be pretty rare when we have a height exceedance due to solar panels. We just don't have a whole lot of. Flat roofs, but, um, it is, it is a good point that unless we put limits on how high it can go up. The problem, of course, is it has to be angled. Solar panels have to be angled properly and that can make a fair amount of height difference. Uh, Roger?
Yeah, I want to echo a little bit what Billy said, um. Just starting to think about this, especially well, we, we've had a whole month and then today. Just trying to think about it. It's hard to actually, you know, picture. We've had very little. And I, one thought that I had, which, uh, Cynthia mentioned that. Uh, you know, it's really not mentioned in our code much. And actually what we need to do is try to get this more inclusive, which would be good. I thought it was kind of reflected today on the fact that actually. Uh, Jimmy Carter was around when we had the original huge big push for solar. And, uh, Golden, Colorado and Lakewood became the center of the, of the solar panel. Uh, bureaucracy back then. So actually solar. Panels and solar energy has been around longer than our. Netherland zoning code. Our zoning code came in nineteen eighty-two.
Um, yep.
And, and so I, I guess one thing that we might look into is that. You know, what happened to barriers in over forty years? Um, so for me to actually work as a commissioner, I'd like to actually see some, you know, good examples of where. You know, what would they would be in Old Town and how we do that. And certainly what putting stuff on the roof, which people want to do because you have the shade and the block trees. Just all kinds of problems when you actually bury in the ground. So I think the vast majority of the panels will be on the roof. We don't really have that many examples in town and it's kind of funny that it's been around that long. And we haven't had that many people. And I realize, right, you, you mentioned the, uh, the good payback down, but really since two thousand. Um, there's been a huge payback. I mean, both my brother and my sister have installed houses here, uh, panels in Colorado. And gotten, you know, good payback, um, from their taxes and however that whole system works. Um. I think the one example we have, which is the community center, um. I guess when I drive by and saw it going in there, I don't think it actually is certainly over the height. But there's some examples we might think about. I think from the highway, some screening needs to be looked at. Because that certainly makes that building look totally different. One thing we might think about is, uh, an existing building. As opposed to a building that's being built. Um, you know, you would hope that if the. Polar County Housing that was put in there across from the RTD was putting in solar panels, and maybe they did, that. Our coach should actually show. Or we would understand that it would be screened or built totally different than someone like the community center that. After the fact it was built to put the solar panels on it. Uh, these are just thoughts that I think we actually ought to look at and actually try to get into our code. Um, I, boy, it sure would be good to actually see some real life. Examples of, you know, here's where we put solar energy in on a lot here in Old Town and actually see. What are the really difficulties? Because I'm not certain, you know, in all these years, have there been that many diff- difficulties? So we certainly need to get something in the, uh, proactively in our code. So I, those are my comments.
Hey. Thanks for that, Roger.
This is Jeremiah. A few things. First off, I want to caveat, uh, and, and endorse what Roger just said. I think that. And it says that right in this report that Soul Smart says, basically the biggest issue is that we don't have any. Uh, thing in code tr- talking directly about, uh, solar energy, you know, as far as policy. And I wonder if, uh, these things we've been talking about would be better served with some kind of a group. Uh, you know, I, I, I was going to suggest the SAB group, but maybe it'll need to be a comprehensive group of, of several. Uh, like kind of what we did with the marijuana, uh, municipal code language that we changed. But it seems like there needs to be some kind of a group to craft some language, uh, for code amendments that would. Address this directly. I wonder if it wouldn't encourage people in building if it actually laid it out right there. What the, uh, solar requirements are, exactly what, you know, you can extend or cannot extend into the right of way. Uh, the things we've talked about today, you know, it can exceed the, uh, max building height by two feet, whatever it is. Those things could be codified, uh, and put, you know, haha, uh, you know, could be. Codified and put into the code, uh, and amended. Uh, I, I think that this, that we already have a starting point. Uh, Solar Smart, Soul Smart, you know, actually put recommendations for code language. Changes right here in the report they submitted to us, which I think are excellent, uh, place to start. But. Uh, is, is there any plans for that that we know of, uh, Miranda, to try and get some kind of a group together to actually start writing? So, some language that we could add to the code?
You're saying like a task force?
Yes. Solar energy task force.
It did encourage, I did meet with the authorities, the new sustainability coordinator, and I did recommend to her that I think some subcommittees. Would be beneficial and they could do a combination with members of the planning commission too. Well, we're actually going to talk about that tomorrow night though. Is breaking this out into its own subcommittee.
Yeah, well, my co- my comment would be that this, this would be worthwhile, would be to look at, at actually trying to. Craft language, uh, that addresses. at actually trying to craft language that addresses this stuff. Use what we already have as a starting point here. Of course, these definitions will have to be redefined for our small town, you know, since we don't have 40,000 square foot surface areas and things like that. But we have a lot of the information, I think, that could be pulled together for the, for the code language. And then, you know, new builders could come in and you could point right to it. They could say, hey, this is exactly what's allowed. This is what's not allowed, anything else you have to go, you know, get an SRU. That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. I was actually going to suggest that once we get feedback from the other boards to put together maybe an inter, inter-board task force to, you know, come up with some code or maybe just even within the planning commission, a small group like we did for chapter 17, just to come up, put in some code. Then, then we have something that we can look at and comment on and tweak and so forth.
I just said maybe, maybe actually a solar company or someone from that solar industry that actually could, could work with us on the obstacles that they're having.
Well, I think that's what that soul group does.
If we have someone be part of a group.
Would they, would they be willing to do that?
I think there are, yeah, there's a few solar companies who are interested in working with town. It gets a little tricky when you're looking at a private entity and what is their gain out of this? But I do think there are some who would be interested in helping to guide. We did that with marijuana where we had businesses with obviously clear interests being a part of it. So I think between like custom solar, people we work with under solarized Nederland, people who are interested in a solar garden, we have enough contact that we could pull in those experts.
I think that'd be very valuable to have kind of an expert as part of that drafting process.
Can I make one more comment, Steve?
Sure.
My comments, I forgot. Cynthia, I have no idea, but the idea reflections from the panel, I think is actually different from windows. Because windows is going to reflect almost straight down. And in fact, and I knew one of, one of my friends lived actually in First Street. And in the morning that, when the houses got built up here on the Big Springs, there was one house that the sun would actually reflect off only from the morning and shine on, on them. But a panel, I don't know for sure, but it's something that, you know, we shouldn't just walk away from. Solar panels say over on the north side of town, reflecting back to the south. You know, a good time of the day, if they actually do reflect, could actually reflect across to houses in Big Spring or any on, buddy on your side, just because of the angle compared to a window. So it's actually something that we should actually consider or look into and make sure we eliminate it.
Would that, would that be something that's done during the permitting process? I mean, we're, because each situation or each location might be somewhat different.
Well, at least I have to put in the code that reflection is an issue.
That, that it could be part of the permitting process, okay.
Is, is, when you brought that up, the reflection, Cynthia, I mean, quite honestly, I don't think I've heard a lot of our solar panels having this particular issue. Actually partially because of their pitch. And they, and they can, it's more kind of if you're to the east or to the west and to the south. But, um, you know, often, you know, the panels are pitched to a roof. Sometimes if they're free to be pitched, you know, they're just pitched based on the latitude really more so than the roof. You know, if they're, they're ground mounted. But I don't know, and I think, I mean, it's going to be kind of tricky because I may live in Old Town, but occasionally in the morning I'll look over on the, you know, on the north ridge or in, in of town and, you know, a certain house will be just lighting up because the sun's hitting it right. But it just kind of happens for a certain part of the day, during a certain part of the year. And it is what it is. And I think it's going to be pretty hard to triangulate every, every possible angle throughout the year and keep everybody happy all the time.
Hey, other, other comments?
Hi, this is Linda and I had a, a comment on if they are not mounted on the house and they're on the ground about the spell drifting and how that would affect other properties. So on the locations, is that a consideration at all? Because the snow with the wind definitely drifts.
You're saying if it accumulated snow around it and then are you speaking of like vision clearance issue?
Clearance issues and how it would affect other properties depending upon the location of the panels.
I think what Linda's saying is that, I'll bring in my meteorology that the solar panels can act like a snow fence and actually
Right.
cause it snow in, in another property just because of the wind flow around them. Is that correct, Linda?
That, yes.
Okay.
And yes, that's where I wonder about just not touching the such setbacks. Cause yeah, it's like driving across I A D in Wyoming and you see all those in the middle of the winter and you, you see on the leeward side, those, you know, all that snow. And, you know, those setbacks would allow for that. You know, they, they are also elevated to some degree. So I don't know, but, but it probably is.
So.
I guess. I mean, just like if you keep the setbacks, then you find yourself some space.
So it occurred to me that the same drifting could occur with a fence between properties.
The same drifting could what? I didn't understand you can.
Oh, could happen if you have a fence on your property line.
Oh, yeah, definitely. But with a solar panel, it would be more of a, of a, like a snow fence and it would change the direction or the, the way the, the drifting went. Depending upon where they were located and the setback.
Yeah, because a snow fence is angled for that reason. Stephanie, do you have any comments?
I was looking back at the PowerPoint, I did have one. I wasn't, Cynthia, I was wondering if there's any context for this idea of whether or not other municipalities have treated this idea of whether they're permeable surface or not, or. Sorry. And whether they, whether we need to, sorry, I wasn't done. I hit the button accidentally. Whether that needs to be included in the code? Because now Billy brought up that point as well. I was just wondering how other municipalities have treated that.
Like the impervious surface?
Whether it's considered an impervious surface and would therefore need or need a code of some kind determining whether or not, how much of the lot it can actually take up or whether it would be exempt from that and therefore not need a zoning consideration.
That's a really good question. I'll have to look into that. I do note that from looking at solar gardens, they talk about having a combined vegetation use with solar gardens. So planting under the panels and being able to use the ground space under the panels. Despite the coverage of the panels, being able to grow wildflowers and other things. So getting a dual use out of a site. So I, you know, I could only extract from that hypothetically that they wouldn't consider it impervious.
That was my impression as well. I would agree with you Cynthia, from my very, very limited knowledge of solar panels and farms and whatnot, which I guess I was on that slide where you had lot coverage pertains to the amount of impervious surface created by structures. It, I guess we would need to consider, should there be a maximum lot coverage? And if so, what would, what are the characteristics we would use to define that? Because I'm not, it's not clear to me that this definition of impervious surfaces is one that would be applicable, applicable for this. But maybe something we still want to consider for other reasons.
We'll have to look at other municipalities and see what they think about that. And else?
I think that maybe worth considering, I know that, for example, they put solar panels on a roof, it has to be a certain, what is it, three feet Cynthia away from? Because you have to drain it properly into the gutters as opposed to just running off the building. And, but I'm not sure about what kind of drainage issues you would get from a ground system. I guess it depends on how big of a farm or number of panels you're talking about and how high they are. But, but there is a, there is a runoff issue with solar panels.
Right, like any ice and snow melts off pretty quickly and drains off the panels. I think the three feet though is the fire code, fire code access. I don't know if that is really getting into drainage, that's a good question.
Yeah, I think Rick is here, I don't know if he can comment on any of this, but yeah, there is a, and I was going to bring up the ice issue because, you know, it's kind of like a metal roof in some ways where you can get these avalanches of ice off of a roof and it can be dangerous.
So I, I have solar panels on my roof and above my front porch, there's no gutter along the edge of the, the roof. And it hasn't been an issue. I've had them for three years and I've never had a large amount of snow come down. So I don't know, I think, I think they heat up more so than a metal roof does.
Well, of course we have our friendly wind to kind of clean them off too.
This is Rick, I've got a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just from the fire department's perspective, as long as the systems are put up meeting code, we're, we're good with all, with all of these. The ground mounts typically aren't an issue for us at all. They're setback from the houses or businesses or whatever. I've seen some really big ones and it just becomes grasslands around them. Again, not a, a huge issue. May have to look at mitigation in there from a fire standpoint, but that's down the road on those. The rooftop ones, Cynthia mentioned that, you know, there are some access issues that we need to have some pathways through them depending on the size of them and the size of the roof. But we, we allow one exception for sure on code to the coverage and other ones depending on what the, the structure it's going on is. One thing Roger asked about the county housing and it does have solar panels on the roof. And one of the things with the new panels, for anybody who's done this recently, is they're much better at picking up energy at off angles, not directly on. So those ones on the community center are all flat mounted. The mounts actually just sit on the roof and they've got these monstrous sandbags that hold it down. So it's not even attached to the roof. And so far it's lived through all of our winds for the last two years. So that seems to be working, but that may actually help with glare as those panels don't need to be oriented as to the south like they used to be quite as much. So just a couple of points there. I had put solar on my house earlier last year. So far it's, it's working great. I don't have any fall off my roof either. I have thermal panels that are right over my front door like Karen mentioned. And occasionally I do get an avalanche off of those over my front door. But I know it's, I know it's coming and I usually try and pull the snow off it anyway. So that's a, could be a safety concern, but I think that's up to individual construction. And hopefully your solar contractors are aware of those kinds of things are going to factor that in. So that's all that I had, thanks.
Thanks, Rick.
So, so Rick, those, those panels at Tunston Village, are they mounted on a flat roof? Is that what you said or is it an angled roof?
It's a flat roof.
Okay, and they're, they're mounted flush with the flat roof?
Yep. Yeah, in, in my case, on my house, because I had thermal panels already, my photovoltaic panels faced east and I'm still picking up energy at five in the afternoon. You know, the sun's way over to the west, so the, the new panels do much better at those off angles.
Well, that might solve the building height issue.
Yeah, see, this is. And see, this is Jim, I just had a quick question for Rick. One of, you know, the questions before the commission, one of them they have listed there is, are there other barriers for solar that should be considered? It's not really anything we can do directly, but cost certainly is a consideration. I wondered, certainly for the comprehensive plan, I, I hope this will be addressed, you know, for the town to try and lean in to rebate opportunities. But Rick, could you give us a ballpark number on what percentage do you think you saved on installing those in rebates?
Well, I'm just doing my taxes now. And it's the 26% or something like that right off. So I know what my tax bill usually is and it's a good 3,000 less this year, it looks like. And what I'll be either having to pay or get back. So I'll be ahead by about $3,000 by adding them this year. I'll have to come up with something, a good tax write-off for this year, I don't know what it'll be, but. So there's a good benefit to it and my system is fairly small.
Well, and that might be something that we could do to help promote solar is to find out some information and have, you know, I don't know how much, what, what the rebates are that are out there. And, and unless you go seek out that research, you know, maybe we could have some flyers or some handouts and things that are available that would, you know, kind of say, hey, here's what the five current rebate programs are, or here's what programs we hope to have in the future. Those kinds of things, but, you know, some other things to help promote solar and green infrastructure in our town. Thank you.
Miranda, do you want to mention the solarized program that went on?
We did a solarized program this past year that provided a rebate based on system size. The rebate typically ranged somewhere from a thousand to $2,000. We would like to launch that program again in the future, but change it so that people can use multiple vendors. At the time, they could only use custom solar and we'd like them to be able to select the installer of their choice. We also would be looking at maybe reducing permitting fees so it just covered safe builds component because that was a deterrent for some people. But we would like to do a more robust solarized program in the future, more to come.
Yeah, and just a comment, Jim, I think a lot of what you're saying is typically pointed out by the contractor or the solar company at the time when people are considering doing it. So I'm not sure how much we need to do in this regard. But, but those are good points.
So I think that, you know, one important metric here is your break even point. When you can start, when your cost savings is equal to the upfront cost of the panels, you know, your break even point of when you'll stop paying for the panels, how many years that is. And there's probably a calculator online for that to determine it with the current, the rebates that you can have. You know, I worked with Namaste for my solar panels and that's what I was presented with in order to make a decision about whether to, to purchase and install the panels.
That, that's, that's what I was saying, Karen, is that these companies will do all those calculations for you. Other people that I know that have put them up, use that information to make the decision whether to go forward or not. And actually some have gone to various vendors because costs vary by vendor and have done an actual, you know, bidding war, I guess if you will, amongst the different vendors to decide how they want to proceed. Because it's the type of panel as well. Goes into the cost, but anyway, yeah, we digress a little bit. But I guess to wrap things up, if no one has any other additional. I guess to wrap things up, if no one has any other additional comments?
I just have one quick comment, I mean, there are, there are resources fully available. There's one called desire, D, desire without the E, without the first E, D S I R E USA dot org. And I just threw it in now and it actually brings up fifty-nine programs that, that are eligible in this zip code. And then they have a solar calculator, which you just hit that button and you could put in your house and do your own work as, you know, and that brings you to enters, the solar calculator brings you to another website through energy, energy stage, but you could do your own simple research and then kind of go, go to the solar companies and let them duke it out because they, they will compete for your business. And um, you know, just educating people pretty simply on that um, is a way to help people realize how easy it is. Yep.
I didn't quite get that written down, could you tell me that again, please?
Yeah, it's called desire, this is for, you know, it's um, desire without the first E, D, and I can't remember the acronym right now, even though I can look it up, D S I R E USA dot org. Um, it's a database of state incentives for renewables and efficiency, that's what, that's what it means. This, this is a, you know, just wide open thing, a website that, that just gives you all these different kinds of programs, what's available, when the programs were created, when it's updated, is it a personal tax credit, a grant program, uh, community solar? It just gives, has a rebate program like you have Excel in here in Boulder County, um, loan program. So it just gives you all these different things that are available. And um, like I said, I just put in eight oh four six six and it gave me fifty, fifty-nine um, entries. So that, that's, these things are extremely available because um, um, these companies want you to buy solar.
So, so Cynthia, um, so the next steps, obviously you're gonna go to the other boards. Are you gonna report back to us on what they've come up with or what, what's your next steps?
Yeah, yeah, we'll take it to the other boards and just let them know what we're trying to accomplish here, that we're trying to eliminate barriers to promote the town and get their feedback on what they think. Obviously, as regards the zoning code, you guys are the experts. So um, we will bring back their comments and feedback. And, you know, it's also a good opportunity to get them thinking about things as, as we would be looking at the comprehensive plan and in the next couple of years, for them to think about their aspects of that. So, you know, we're trying to move forward and eliminate barriers, but also get the juices flowing on how to support the Board of Trustees, the resolution to support renewable energy and promote more solar.
Okay, and I think in the meantime too, we can all look at your questions and your presentation and think a little bit more about uh, zoning and, and some of the questions that you brought up or how to decrease barriers. I think that's worth doing as a, as a parallel function. And as I said before, and to echo what Jim Reese said, I like the idea of having maybe a small task force or a group, maybe put together a um, draft of chapter sixteen with solar added, and then we have something we can all look at and comment on.
I had done that initially, uh, a month ago, but I think we really wanted to, there's an echo.
Who's Julian?
Yeah, I had, I had made some changes, uh, just kind of looking at the code and, and places that could be changed. But I think we wanted to introduce the topic to the planning commission and get them thinking about that before we started drafting an ordinance. And, and, you know, even though we'd like to, to move forward on promoting solar however we can, you know, also wanted to uh, to not move too, too fast and, and throw an ordinance before you and say, okay, well, let's make these changes. But to really get this content and uh, and then look at what other boards, what, what they're thinking of with respect to solar.
Right, well, I'm just suggesting that we do this downstream of what you're saying so that um, you get the input from, from the other boards and then we can uh, put a little task group together to maybe even take your draft and, and uh, tweak it some more or something. And then we can come back to the planning commission with, with, you know, something more concrete. It's always easier to, to comment or to edit something when it's um, when you have a, a straw man. I guess it's a straw person now, not a straw man anymore. So um, that's my suggestion on how we should proceed.
Here's a, here's an addition to that suggestion and to have a committee that has member, a member from, or more from the planning commission and from the sustainability advisory board.
Right, yeah, we can define the group. Or we can do it in parallel. I kind of like the idea of, of getting some other folks like that, plus uh, an expert involved. You know, obviously Cynthia, since she's done a lot of work on this. And, you know, maybe even um, uh, you know, uh, someone from the public or something like that. But we can, we can decide, I think later, how to structure such a group. But the whole point is to have a group that can put together a straw person. Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions?
Just to comment on, I think it's really important that uh, the resources are available and I think it will get people on board easier so they have someplace to look for information, like the price comparisons. Um, I think that's really important. I, I feel people are reluctant to do this because they don't have the facts to go with. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I agree with what you said, with what you said, Billy, with all the different uh, options that are available. People aren't aware of those all the time.
Yeah, I agree that, I think that's a barrier um, to uh, um, acquiring solar, using solar, and it, it's education.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
Are you suggesting that this is a resource that the, the town can provide to prospective builders?
Well, I may not, not necessarily the town, but just somehow have it available for people to reach out to. This is to direct them to the information.
It could be on the town's website.
Well, I think when the, the solarize is relaunched, that will be, be an aspect of it. Um, and that was, that was an objective of the sustainability advisory board. So trying to hone in more on zoning concerns with you guys.
Okay.
As for what your purview is. I mean, I, I think it's absolutely wonderful. I didn't, I know about energy stage, but I didn't know about the desire USA site, which is really helpful, thanks for that, Billy. That offers a lot of uh, input and they may know about that on the SAB. Um, but that'll be, you know, I think that's more the meat of their sandwich of what they consider and what they're looking at. And then um, seeing as there was just one solar provider, custom solar, I don't think that we got as many people, you know, participating in that program as we could have. And I even had solar applications from people from other companies. And it's not like I could say, well, don't go with that company, go with custom solar. So, you know, hopefully it'll be a more uh, robust launch of the solarized program and looking at, you know, what the town can incentivize and um, you know, and then the opportunity of the federal rebate, those kind of things. There's a lot of resources out there and um, I know that contractors definitely provide that information and people can, you know, do an internet search, but I think it's helpful for people to have it and may remove some of the hesitancy that people may have to acquire solar. And I think that uh, you know, information like Karen provided and Rick, who have solar panels and can, can give that kind of information, you know, eliminate any of the concerns that may not be relevant, but also speak to uh, you know, what the payback is on a solar. I think that, you know, those are, those are helpful and, and maybe we'll take them for the solarized program to take part and they can, they can speak on their experiences.
Okay, Cynthia, is there anything else you need from us at this point?
I don't think so, thank you.
Okay, um, why don't we take a five-minute break to go to the bathroom or get a drink or, and then we'll come back, finish up with the town report and any other business. Go from there, sound okay? Nine oh five?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Hey. Julian's back, I see Julian, but maybe he didn't leave, I don't know.
Can, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Is the volume about right?
The volume is perfect.
Perfect.
Okay, very good. So I've actually convinced uh, the WebEx to work with my Linux machine, so good, excellent.
You did. Okay, um, Miranda, you back?
Yeah, I just, I accidentally closed the packet, so let me, let me open it back up so I can share.
Yeah, it might be useful.
Yeah, you might, you might like to see the faces of all of the new leaders in our team. All right. I think we, I'm sure we have everyone, I'm happy to jump into it.
Is everyone, if, if you're not back, will you let us know?
Say something now.
That's funny, isn't it? Something Roger would say.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so as I just noted, we have a lot of transitions that have happened in our team. People have moved into leadership roles, so I just want to highlight them, a few of these you already know about, but would just would like to, to celebrate them for a minute. Peter Kasich was our administrative assistant, he was recently promoted to administrative support manager. And in this promotion, he is now taking over the visitor center. Um, so he does support that team as well as taking on more administrative roles, not only within town hall, but supporting all the other departments. Um, Nikki Dunn was recently promoted to parks manager. She was formerly the parks lead. We have actually filled the parks lead position with the other candidate we are considering for parks manager. So it's kind of cool, I feel like we get, we get two people when we were originally hiring for one, um, both with amazing, amazing qualities. Um, so glad to have them. Jennifer Fine Levin was just selected as town marshal. Marshall Johns is with us until May sixth, but Jennifer will take her oath of office in April um, and then will serve in that capacity. So we're kind of martial in training right now with her. Ben Landen is the utilities manager, she was formerly the utility supervisor. She is um, the O R C of water and wastewater, um, so she does support that in that capacity. Emmett Pelletier was an operator two within our streets department, but we have promoted him to be the street supervisor, so he oversees that team in that department. And then Erica Thorley, who is not a town staff person, but served on SAB for many years, um, was selected out of ninety-six candidates, um, she was selected as a sustainability coordinator. So we're really excited to have this group and all of these changes. From a COVID standpoint, and we actually are, despite a, a kind of a rapid increase we saw really over like the holiday season and throughout January, the testing is going down. Um, we're seeing typically in the single digits now when it comes to Netherlands testing numbers, so that's great. With this decrease, we did see um, the release of the mask order. So there is no longer a mask order in place in Boulder County except for um, certain designated locations, um, which may be like school buses and public transportation. Town is still doing, sorry to scroll up, but we're still doing COVID testing and vaccines. Testings are on Monday, um, usually from about four to seven, and the vaccine clinics are Testings are on Monday, um, usually from about four to seven, and the vaccine clinics are on Thursdays from four to six. We do still have some PPE, but we're kind of just down to hand sanitizer to give out to businesses. So we are encouraging them to stop by and grab that. A couple kind of committee updates that we're on roadmap to recovery, which a reminder, this is the committee that's teamed up with Estes Park, Lyons, Clear Creek, Gilpin and Grand County. Um, we've identified kind of our high level goals being diversity of the local economy, development of equitable housing and workforce opportunities, access to public services and creating a resilient, sorry, I should say natural and social environments. Um, so that's our high level goal. When we narrow it in though, we are looking specifically at broadband. Um, Estes is leading the, the charge on that, but looking to make that across the peak to peak. Affordable housing and then wildfire mitigation is on all of our minds. We, I, I actually didn't put it in this report, but kind of what spun out of Roadback to Recovery is a peak to peak byway committee that town is serving on with Gilpin County. And the kind of the point of that is how do we move tourists really from Estes Park all the way to Idaho Springs and enjoy our peak to peak byway? And also stop in our respective communities. Um, so that's something we're looking at too for economic development. Our, within our fellow neighbors here. Some of you may have attended the crossing Caribou Mine. We did have a collaborative meeting a few weeks ago. Uh, from that, we're working on a website page on our town site that would house really factual information about the crossing Caribou Mine. Specifically how to submit questions, concerns or complaints to the appropriate personnel. Um, Peter has finished that. We're going to look at it over tomorrow and I aim that we can have that launched by next week.
Miranda?
Yeah.
Do you know the status of the meeting that Grand Island Resource said they were going to hold at the Caribou Room and invite the public?
Unfortunately I don't. I did actually reach out to their attorney this week to see if he had any information and I haven't heard back.
I have a lot of questions for them.
Yeah, when I do, I'll send that out to this, to the, the commission. Um, hopefully we'll hear from them soon.
Okay, thanks.
Cause even our website, I don't think will answer a lot of the questions that people asked at that collaborative meeting. I think that they're going to want to have, to ask them directly of the mine themselves. Um, the Intermountain Alliance is, is back up and running, which is great. Karen Garrity has actually taken the lead. So it's nice to be able to work with her in that format. Um, we've broken out though into different subcommittees and Cynthia, Rick and I are on a wildfire mitigation subcommittee. As well as members of Wild Bear, the Boulder Watership Collective, um, and then the area agency on aging. The committee was formed to look specifically at Nogus's wildfire prevention and recovery bill. However, there's not a lot of movement on that. So we're also using the time to assess other opportunities, including but not limited to Big Springs Egress Project, mi- wildfire mitigation, funding, uh, for possibly our pocket parks, doing a social media campaign, um, focusing on obviously always encouraging property owners to establish a defensible space. And then also there was a recent grant looking for funding to update the Colorado wildfire protection plan. So we meet monthly and we'll hopefully continue to have momentum on all things wildfire, wildfire mitigation, uh, to prepare ourselves for hopefully what's not coming. But you know, obviously given the recent Marshall fires, we are on heightened alert and want to do everything we can to protect. And then as always, ending on a public works update, like I say every time, I'm not the expert here. If there are questions, I'm happy to pass those along through the public works department, but I do think they're always busy doing quite a bit of stuff. And it's nice to share with you what's on their radar. And that's the report.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Miranda. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Miranda, uh, will, will the streets folks clear out off the sidewalk? That is, um, has a hard drift on it by the pavilion at Chapata Park? Yeah, this is the first, yeah, the first winter that I think that hasn't been moved.
Um, okay.
Yeah. And then there's like, uh, uh, maybe it's not quite as bad as it was a few days ago, but that sidewalk that runs, um, from VNF to the, um, the bridge, the covered bridge.
Okay.
That was an ice rink.
Okay.
I bet. I think it's pretty good.
To now.
Yeah. And then I do have one, one more question, and that is about the, uh, I, Netherlands Ice Rink and Tennis Park, um, being absorbed by the Parks Department. And so could you talk about the benefits of doing that and what, you know, I, I don't know the history behind that or why we would want to do that?
So we, uh, we were actually approached by Rink and Tennis, um, feeling like they needed town support. So we own that land, um, but the facilities themselves are run by nonprofits. And they were struggling to feel that they could continue in that capacity and ask town if we would consider taking on these assets. So we would acquire the funding that, the money that comes from their memberships or their daily rates. Um, and under town, we also have the ability to seek out different grant funding like GOCO to update those facilities. So when developing the parks manager position, it, they kind of came hand in hand. Like in order for us to feel like we could fund a parks manager, we needed to acquire Ring, it, Rink and Tennis along with their financial resources to then offset the costs of adding on another personnel in a, in a budget that really, you know, department that really doesn't exist. And so they, we are, we do feel like there's benefit in involving it because we want to have a more robust recreational opportunities throughout town. And town has the ongoing staffing needed to maintain that. Where right now they rely solely on volunteers. So we will do a combination of volunteer and staff, but this will give it, I think, more attention than it, they've done a great job over there, but this just kind of heightens that attention those assets get.
Oh, that makes sense. Thanks.
Hey, anything else?
Yes, uh, this is Jim. Hi Miranda, I have one comment and then a question for you. The comment was that, uh, the testing that is normally done on Mondays at the community center was canceled this week, but they're going to redo it this Thursday from four to seven. Dale, uh, Dennis Whalen sent me that information. So I just thought I'd let you know in case you wanted to put that out anywhere. And then my question to you is, uh, was it your decision to decide to forego, a- and how do you feel about it, foregoing a public works manager and taking on the direct supervision of those three department heads? Without somebody to kind of oversee all that and the grant opportunities and everything else?
It was my recommendation to the board of trustees. It did run it by them individually to see if they supported doing so, um, which I did receive unanimous support. Um, this thought was, there are strong leaders in each department. So perhaps breaking them up gave them that ability to execute what they're good at. Um, they were a little stunted under kind of an overarching manager. And so the intention was to give it a shot, see what happens. So far it does appear to be working just fine. There may be some fine tuning, like Karen brought forward some things we need to, to make sure it don't fall through the cracks, but, um, I, I wanted to work with the team we have. I don't always believe that bringing in outside makes things better. Um, and so that's kind of the way I communicated that to the board of trustees and, and of course, if we get to a place where it's not working, I'll bring in a public works manager, but right now I'd like to see by breaking these three departments apart, what those new leaders are capable of doing.
Well, thank you. That was a great answer. I, uh, only bring this up because I know how easily it is for somebody in your type of position to get overwhelmed with the amount of tasks. And so, uh, I, I want you to also look out for your amount of time that you have. There's only, uh, 160 hours in a week and you don't need to work all of them.
Maybe, yeah, I think that's right. No, I mean, I, I think they're new. I was just talking to Jesse Taylor about this a little bit earlier. You know, they're new and they're getting their feet wet. And I think once they get a, a strong handle under their positions of budgeting, the stuff that department has to do, they'll be in a better place. But are kind of keeping that eye on the, the team and what they're supporting. I appreciate that.
Okay. Very good. Um, do we have any other business to discuss? Anyone want to bring anything up quickly? Town, town staff, anything under other business? What do we have coming up, uh, in the next month or two that, to your knowledge?
So I don't think, Cynthia, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have any applications. Um, couple of things before the board of trustees that may end up falling into planning commission just for feedback. Um, that being, let me do a quick recap. We're looking at a watershed ordinance, which would give us the authority to provide regulations. To, the watershed is five miles from our intake sites. Our intake site is off of Eldora Road. So we go five miles then really kind of straight west, um, and, and can have authority over the impact of that watershed. We're also looking at a 1041 regulation, which would mean that anytime CDOT came to do work within town of Netherlands, they'd have to get approval from Netherlands. Oftentimes CDOT comes here, they start paving and we had no idea they were coming. Um, so it would be nice to have them have to connect with us. Uh, the Caribou Room, Roger, I guess this is for you to know too, is the Caribou Room does intend to come forward for their SRU for outdoor dining, eating, drinking and commercial activity on March 15th. And there will be public notices that go out about that. Um, but, but, uh, Peter Fiori had put that request for an SRU off by almost a year and he is ready to pick that back up. Um, otherwise it's kind of the board, you know, as we head into a board changeover in this upcoming election, it was really the board just kind of tying up loose ends. Mayor Larson does intend to lift the local emergency declaration. Uh, but in doing so, we have to put into effect a hybrid resolution for meetings, which will allow us to do virtual and in person. Um, so we're going to kind of sort through some of those things next week. And then lots of grants. We're bringing lots of grants forward.
Great. Okay. Super. Anything else? Anyone?
Yeah, this, this is Billy, just a real quick reminder, um, uh, Miranda, we talked a little bit last month. I brought up the 48 inch, uh, foundation depth and I read the notes that, you know, it wasn't on time to talk about the minutes, but, um, uh, just, just look forward to hearing Emmet, Emmet's follow up on that when you, when you meet up with him about it.
Yes. My, we've been doing kind of team meetings since all the transitions happened. My first one, one with him is next week actually. So I will make sure to get, try to get his feedback and then follow back up.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah. I was just saying it'd be good to really look at all the comparable surrounding communities and, and, and look at our numbers and first of all, see what he thinks.
Okay. Anything else? If not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I motioned to adjourn.
Okay.
Roger seconds, I guess. Okay. This is normally Cynthia's, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye aye.
All right. Thanks everyone.
Thanks you guys.
Bye.
Meeting is adjourned at nine 23 PM.
Woo hoo.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.